Agenda?
Uh, the roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Okay. Knight. Alt.
Yeah.
Genzik. Nichols.
Yeah.
Von Trager. Pavilio.
You're in Cadillac.
Walkley. And with some people absent, we can use our new alternate. Ben Dean can participate. So Ben, you're in roll call now.
I'm here and in Cadillac.
You are here and we'll see if Troy joins us and I'll write the number down. Next on the agenda, Nick.
Uh, let's see here, approval agenda.
I move we approve the agendas presented.
Yeah, we have second.
I have second.
Uh, the roll call on it. Alt.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Pavilio.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
We have roll call. Finished, okay?
This is approval minutes for uh, May twentieth twenty-one. Any corrections, deletions, or additions?
I'll make a motion. We accept everything as is.
Do I have second?
Second.
Okay.
Ben, you could have seconded that one, by the way, so.
I could have.
I was giving him a chance to get in the minutes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Pavilio.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next is up to you, Mike.
Okay, uh, what we have everyone is a uh, application for a side yard variance uh, by Beverly Rex, a single woman who purchased the home at twenty-two sixteen North Boulevard um, in twenty fifteen. Um, it's right on the corner, I believe, with Winona. Uh, in your packets, I included a G I S of her home, the neighbor, uh, and so forth across the street. Uh, I also included a picture of this back or this side yard porch uh, that of course was there prior to her building it, so you could see it and the paved patio uh, that is next to it. Um, what she is asking for, uh, she can replace the porch, the porch type deck. She can replace that and a variance is not required. But she would like to put a roof over a section of the porch, basically coming out. I'm gonna try and share something here, uh, if I can. Can everybody see this okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So what she would like to do is uh, to have some protection from, you know, inclement weather and that. She wants to put a uh, you know, a roof over the porch, but she would like to extend it out as far as the end of the deck from the house, which is nine feet, and then come out a little ways because the steps, as you can see, are recessed. And they'll be recessed, the new one, uh, the new deck will be recessed going directly towards her driveway where she, you know, the uh, the garage and where they park. And then at the other send of the deck towards this area where I'm kinda moving the arrow uh, uh, with the new deck, she'll have a set of steps going down this way also. But what she would like to do is put the roof over the porch out to the end of the porch, the deck here, so that she'll have part of this new deck porch uh, covered, not only to protect people coming to her door, um, uh, you know, whether it be family or friends, uh, but also to give her space to have a table and chairs and uh, you know, be out of the rain, maybe have a little bit of shade and so forth. So that is her intention. From the G I S that all of you have, um, the standards are such that it is a corner lot. And corner lots, the standard calls for uh, least yard setback, side and front, has to be at least twenty feet. And this particular home, as it's built, um, it currently is not twenty feet off the property line. It's certainly more than twenty feet off the curb area, but it's not twenty feet off the property line. Um, along with that, in the G I S, I included uh, the neighbor's home across the Winona Street, also on a corner, uh, the McEwen's home and the wall of the McEwen's home on the east is actually, I measured it fourteen feet from the curb. Uh, Mrs. Rex, well, her husband passed away. Mrs. Rex's porch right here at the end, that is nineteen feet off the curb. And directly across Winona Street, the McEwen's home, the wall of it is fourteen feet off the curb. So there is some uh, there's, there, there is some conditions there uh, that we're gonna get into here. Uh, it is a R three zone district and she is across North Boulevard uh, from Lake Cadillac. Uh, I would like to go through some of the standards and as we know, uh, the from section forty-six dash sixty-nine B two, it states, "The zoning board of appeals may authorize a variance from the strict application of the provisions of the zoning ordinance whereby reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, area of a specific piece of property at the time of the enactment of the ordinance, or by reason of exceptional conditions of such property, uh, strict application of the regulations would result in peculiar or exceptional practical difficulty or exceptional undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the ordinance." I would also uh, am going to go over uh, some other, well, this standard in particular, right here. Uh, you know, finding that we have on this is, there is there is an exceptional condition in that the neighborhood as a whole. Uh, North Boulevard, um, again, directly across Winona Street, you know, we have a non-conforming uh, home, side yard, corner lot setback. Um, and of course, that's significantly closer to the curb than Mrs. Rex's. As I put in the staff report, I went through the G I S and drove down there a couple times and I was, found it fascinating how many non-conforming front yard, side yard um, setbacks there were within this roughly five block or six block area of North Boulevard. Um, I basically found of this fourteen home stretch in about a five block area, that of the fourteen homes, twelve of these fourteen homes currently have either front yard, side yard, or both uh, non-conformities. And uh, so it's a, certainly in that neighborhood, um, boy, it's been allowed for a lot, a lot, a lot of years that there be these side yard setback non-conformities. And I found it especially interesting that um, ten of the twelve non-conforming lots with setbacks um, were actually on corner lots. They were all on corner lots such as hers. I would also like to then get into the standards in forty-six dash sixty-nine four. And these are the ones we're familiar with through the zoning enabling act and in our ordinance. And the standard is, "The requested variance will not impair an adequate supply of light air to adjacent property." Um, if the variance is, you know, if it's allowed, it certainly would not uh, affect the supply of lighter air. Uh, next would be the requested variance, uh, shall not, will not unreasonably increase congestion in public streets. This is not gonna affect traffic volumes uh, at all. Next, "The requested variance will not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety." Uh, under no circumstances should it. And of course, the contractor who would be Hammacher Construction, they'll be getting all the appropriate uh, building permits and inspections done. Uh, next, "The variance will not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety." We see no reason that it would endanger the public safety in any way. And last, or no, not last, but "The requested variance will not unreasonably diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area." We see no reason this is going to affect property values, um, other than her own. It would certainly go up a little bit. And lastly, "The requested variance will not impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city." We do not see how this variance request is going to impair any of those, the public health, safety, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. In my staff report, under staff comments, um, I basically, and if you look at the picture, um, Ms. Ms. Rex is going to have the porch rebuilt and she's going to extend it in the picture towards us, an additional, uh, let's see, I think, I actually looked at my staff report, I, in this particular sentence, I put, okay, yes, um, the side of her home, uh, where the deck is, it sits nineteen feet from the curb on Winona. Um, and I also put that the, obviously, the roof over the area of the porch would not extend any closer to Winona Street uh, than the current uh, distance the porch is away from the house. And of course, the McEwen's home across the way, that's fourteen feet from the curb. And uh, Dan McEwen sent us a email, basically, uh, supporting uh, his neighbor Bev Rex's uh, application. Um, this is of course, one of many non-conforming structures in this North Boulevard uh, neighborhood area. Um, again, I, I mentioned earlier, Ms. Rex, Ms. Rex Bev, um, she purchased the home in twenty fifteen. Uh, she is sorry she was unable to attend um, this, this meeting tonight. But I also looked up uh, some other uh, cases that this zoning board of appeal appeals have reviewed um, in the short time I've worked for the city. Uh, and back in twenty thirteen October, uh, Mrs. Rexford uh, lived at seventeen, seven seventeen Chestnut and she was granted a variance to add a carport to her home and the carport extended towards the side yard lot line and uh, it was approved. And the uh, carport, uh, the outside of the uh, carport away from the home uh, was approved to go within three feet of the neighbor's property line. We had a very similar one in August of twenty fourteen at two forty-seven Granite. A person uh, wanted to build a new house on a narrow lot. That house has not been built uh, to this day. But the applicant who purchased the lot, wanted to build the home, um, because of the narrowness of the lot, he wanted to have a side side of the house entryway and he wanted to have a covered porch over the entryway extending out and it was approved and it too uh, was allowed to go away from the home uh, and be roughly three feet from the property line, the side yard property line. And the zoning board of appeals, when these were approved, definitely included the condition that neither one of these, the carport nor the porch on the home could be enclosed in the future. They were gonna have to be open on the sides and not enclosed. So uh, strictly the roof over the carport and the porch. Uh, lastly, um, public notices were put in the newspaper. Uh, public notices were sent to all the neighbors. There were a lot of neighbors because of a lot of small lots along North Boulevard in that neighborhood. They were sent out more than fifteen days in advance. And uh, the only response I got from any of the neighbors was the one from Mr. McEwen, her neighbor across Winona. Um, having said all that, um, uh, the board action, based on a finding of compliance or non-compliance with the standards of the ordinance, the board shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the variance application and reasonable conditions may be attached to an approval in order to achieve compliance with the standards of the ordinance. Um, having said all of that, um, I'm done, uh, unless you have some questions for me or discuss it amongst yourselves.
I have a couple of questions for you, Mike. Uh, what is the width of the lot?
The width of the lot is fifty feet. And I'm estimating that the property line of the lot sits fourteen to fifteen feet off the curb, much like the McEwen's across Winona. It appears the McEwen's lot is, or home is pretty much built, boy, probably maybe within a foot of the property line. Uh, a lot of our standard streets are sixty-six feet wide, the right of way for the road and utilities. Um, Winona Street has a fifty-six foot right of way, so it is a uh, somewhat slightly narrower um, right of way than a lot of our streets and basically, it would kinda make it almost impossible to ever put sidewalks along the side of Winona Street going up away from the lake. When you have those narrower right of ways, it kind of, sort of eliminates uh, the possibility of them ever having sidewalks through there. Does that answer your question, Leo?
It does. Um, is this a waterfront home?
Um, it, it has the waterfront view. It is across, you know, North Boulevard is between her home and the waterfront, you know, the, the shoreline. So there is the North Boulevard Street there in front of her home. And uh, and that area also falls within what's called the um, North Boulevard Lake Association Marina Association, where people have to apply and get permits to put uh, docks on North Boulevard, meeting all these standards. So um, so yeah, they get uh, they, they get a fair amount of foot traffic through there. Um, you know, because of people walking from side streets or parking on side streets and walking to where their docks and boats are and uh, you know, that's a big reason she has the white vinyl privacy fence where she does, just because of, you know, cars and people driving by.
And because this is a corner lot, she needs twenty feet uh,
The side yard setback from the property line should be twenty feet. And if you add the twenty feet to the roughly fourteen feet, um, where the uh, you know, the property line is off the curb, um, to be conforming, the home would need to be roughly thirty-four feet from the curb. And the home currently is twenty-eight feet from the curb. So it's already non-conforming in the sense that it's a corner lot. Um, it certainly is conforming if it were a typical side yard setback for an R three.
Well, I'm a little confused in the um, corner, for a corner lot, we require more side yard setback than we do front yard setback.
Um.
Front yard is eighteen feet. And because it's a corner lot, the.
I, I actually read that the same way you do. So your, 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 your confusion, I cannot explain because I, I interpret it the same way you do. I interpret it exactly the same way you do. And again, if uh, boy, if I tried to figure out the distances of all the non-conformities, that's what I found so fascinating when I looked at the aerial G I S and then I drove up North Boulevard, was that just within this five block area, there were, there were already ten homes on corner lots on North Boulevard, just within a five block area, uh, that have these side yard, primarily these side yard non-conformities. There's, there's a lot, uh, there's a lot right on one of the corners that is only twenty-five foot wide. And, you know, from the property line, so, you know, how in the world could you ever build a home, but there's, there's a home that pretty much fills the entire lot. It's a, it's a very unique, it, it's a very unique neighborhood to look at from a sheer zoning standpoint of setbacks and lot coverage. And actually, with this covered porch that she has, um, she still will be slightly below, um, in an R three zoned area, you can cover up to forty percent of the property with covered structures, whether it be home, shed, covered porches, that sort of thing, or deck. And even with the additional porch area, um, that she would like to have a roof over, she is still below that forty percent. I'm trying to answer your question. I'm not sure if I am, but I'm trying.
Well, there's some, some questions that don't have answers.
Um, I, I don't have them, no. So, but it's, yeah.
Well, if you look, you know, through the years, all the zoning law change, you know, changes. You know, when this house was built, it could have fit up perfect, but with, you know, through the years, all of a sudden it don't fit. Because, you know, zoning, zoning changes over the years.
And we're living with decisions that were made fifty or seventy-five or a hundred years ago.
You know, this could have been annexed to Cadillac too. You know, I don't know when this became part of Cadillac, but it could have been annexed to Cadillac and it could have been a whole, you know, whole another ball of wax. Yeah, I just, and if you look at the, the G, uh, GPS, I mean, her backyard line is almost in her garage.
Right. Well, this is kind of a unique thing because um, the home immediately to the east of hers uh, towards town, on the opposite side from the McEwen's, um, those folks cannot get to their garage area, their driveway garage area without crossing the north side of Mrs. Rex's property, where it's paved. And in looking at deeds and stuff, there has never been an actual easement agreement signed that gives that neighbor um, permanent permission to do that. And uh, that would be kind of interesting if down the road, there were some hard feelings between neighbors.
Yeah, create a big problem.
Yeah. It's a, it's a very unique neighborhood with a variety of non-conformities.
See that, that all could have been done before it became part of City of Cadillac.
Correct, correct.
Then, you know.
Yep.
And uh, the uh, deck that she's going to build is, the footprint is no closer to Winona Street than what she's, where she currently is.
Correct.
So it's almost as though we've got uh, uh, a non-conforming situation that we're not gonna make anymore.
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming, exactly.
And yes, I mean, yeah, s- sort of. I'll just say, yes, sort of.
Yes, I, and I sort of understand what you mean.
Yeah, and, and that's again, why I double-checked the um, the square footage of the, you know, of her home and added this covered porch area to make sure it was under that forty percent, so we don't have another non-conformity that we need to apply for variance, you know. And again, I'm, what I really like is I'm getting these square footage figures now from Wexford County Equalization versus using the G I S that I included with you. Um, and um, uh, what equalization has is so much more accurate because they actually measure it. Whereas when you look at our G I Ss, they're always somewhat distorted and you can tell it just by the shadows. You know, you can see shadows of homes and uh, you know.
That might have helped on my pole barn.
Pardon, Ben?
That might have helped on the pole barn, the shadows.
Okay, true.
Um, quick question on this. Do we know uh, what way the roof is gonna slope? I'm assuming it's gonna follow the same general direction as it can be raised?
Well, it won't be any higher than the current roof. And based on how the current roof is, I guess, um, I, I guess I'll put it this way, is looking at the picture as I am right now, you know, the current roof is here.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, then from the side, the new one will, you know, I'm sure come out. Um, and I, and I actually haven't um, seen a final, um, I mean, I know what the site plan is gonna look like, but as far as the actual drawings that are gonna have to be stamped by an engineer for construction purposes, you know, Matt Hammacher has not gotten that far uh, until he and Beverly knew whether she could add a roof to it or not.
Yeah.
Well, you look at the house, it's a hip roof, so it's gonna be kinda hard not to follow.
Yeah.
Yeah, just further up, right?
Plus, if we approve this, we can also put that into the stipulations.
Yes, you may.
Cause my thought there was the neighbor behind them to the north probably has sightlines to the lake, I'm assuming.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming they wanna, they didn't reply, but I'm assuming they'd wanna keep some of those sightlines. So if we had the, if they follow a similar angle, I guess you minimize the amount of um, sightline destruction.
Or at least certainly not be any lower than the current soffit line.
Any lower, yeah, and then um, not change the direction, so you have this, don't have porch turn ninety, cause then you'd project out really tall up. Does that make sense?
Not really sure if I understand that, Ben. Um, I, I certainly would not be in favor of, let's say, a flat roof or something like that over it, but I think that's a, what you make though too, is the sightline is, you know, a huge reason, um, we've made conditions in the past that, you know, it cannot be enclosed.
Right.
You know, it can't be enclosed.
That's why they can't make it into a room.
Correct.
Some way down the road, can't make it into a room. If they do, we can come in and say, tear it down.
Right, yep, tear the walls down.
So I mean, that kinda just affect the sightline and you know, rook, can't be enclosed. The guy right behind him, behind her through her porch, could see right through the porch that way.
Right.
This is a terrible drawing. Maybe you can see it. Um, so two different projections, yeah, you make it follow the same out, so it minimizes the, maybe the sun sets, the people behind them see.
Okay, yeah, I think, I, I think I see what you're talking about. What, what I would think would be the right way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. To me, that would be the right way. I get it.
Yeah, yep. That is my thoughts for the folks behind them.
If you'd use the colored crayon, crayon next time, it would stick out a little better.
Gotcha. I just had a pen on me.
No problem.
Any other questions? If not, how about a motion? I can't make one.
Ben, you're on this board. You can, you can speak if you want, or you can, you're, you're, you're gonna, at some point, gonna be asked to uh, vote on it.
I know. Um, do we have to get the, the conditions in before we vote?
Please.
So do I motion the condition, the open walls of the porch and the construction of the roof?
I'll second.
Okay.
And uh, I'll add the condition, uh, like to add, uh, the condition that it not be enclosed in the future.
Right.
Correct, that's what he said too.
Stated, open walls, which I'll include both the word not enclosed and open walls. Would that be okay? Okay, basically, it's the same thing, but I'll add both uh, both verbiage, both terms of verbiage to it. So I don't think we need a new motion, cause I think we're, yeah, we're, we're on the same page then. So uh, Ben made a motion to approve, Sherry seconded it. Nichols?
Yes.
Genzik's not here. Walkley's not here. Knight? Alt?
Yes.
Pavilio?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
I will let Mrs. Rex know that, um, Matt Hammacher, when he does her porch deck, can include a uh, roof over the, over the section that she applied for, certainly not any greater. Super.
Okay.
Um, go ahead, the meeting's yours, yours again, Nick.
Hey, we, we don't have any table items, I don't think.
Nope.
Uh, any public comments? I'd just like to get rid of this thing. Yeah, I guess we adjourn.
Okay. I am gonna just, real quickly add, thank you, everyone, Ben, welcome again, and um, thank you for participating. Uh, certainly call, ask.